Uh, nope, that's the original, eh?
No.
Not there. All right, let's go. You ready? Always good to have in your back pocket.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask... Oh, hold on a second, we got a tape machine issue. Okay, and I'm gonna ask Mr... I don't think we have to have the... Everybody just relax here for a moment. I think we had to, yeah. I think we can proceed with the pledge, so... We'll proceed with the pledge while they're getting the tape machine, and obviously, we won't be able to move forward with the public hearing part of the meeting, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Visconti to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman?
Pledge of Allegiance is to declare, from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a freedom and justice for all.
Ask Mr. Riley to please lead us in prayer. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Once more, Lord, we ask your blessing as we ponder over those issues that will impact all of us in this fair city. In your name, Lord, guide us to ensure that we will be honest and fair to all as we go about the business at hand tonight. Lord, hear our prayers for the sick and the ill. Heal them in your loving name, Lord, and let them suffer no more. These are hard times, Lord, and we seek your help to keep us strong under very trying conditions. Allow us in your name to help the weak and the elderly in their time of need. We ask for your blessing of our heroic troops, who in some cases make the supreme sacrifice, in order that we will remain free in this great country. Bring these men and women home to their families so that they will live in peace at last. Thank you for your blessing, Lord God.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. McLaughlin, can I have the items, please? Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin the public comment portion of the meeting, I wanted to take a few moments to recognize a member of our own up here on the dais. For many of you who don't know, or do know, Councilman Visconti really engaged in a heroic effort on May 24, 2008. Mr. Visconti, for those of you guys who don't know, saw smoke in a neighbor's house. He ran inside. A rousy occupant, who was on the second floor, a young teenager, really got them out of the room while it was on fire, and got them out of the building safely. In fact, when I had arrived on scene, about 15 minutes after the call came in, Mr. Visconti was covered in soot and had been singed a little bit, but he was nonetheless okay. And I think it's a real testament to his caring concern as a fine resident of Danbury and a good neighbor, that he could engage in such a wonderful thing as saving the life of another human being. So Fred, with that, I've got two special recognitions for you. One of them is the mayor's proclamation that I'd like to read to you. It says, "City of Danbury Mayor's Proclamation. Be hereby known to all that the mayor and the citizens of the City of Danbury honors Frederick L. Visconti Jr. for his heroism and his community service. And whereas Fred Visconti was born and raised in Danbury's Mountainville neighborhood, where he still lives, and whereas Fred retired from the Danbury Fire Department in 1995, following a distinguished career, and soon followed his father, Fred Visconti Senior, as a member of the Danbury Common Council representing Ward 5, and whereas on Saturday, May 24, 2008, Fred Visconti was in his front yard and saw smoke coming from his neighbor's house, he rushed to the front door and met one of the occupants exiting the home, and discovered a teenager who was still upstairs in the bedroom. Fred climbed the stairs through a smoking fire to awaken the man and lead him out of harm's way. And whereas Fred Visconti saved a life for which his neighbors in the Danbury community are eternally grateful for his heroism, so therefore, be resolved that I, Mark D. Bowden, as mayor of the City of Danbury, to hereby proclaim today, June 3, 2008, as Frederick Elvis Conti Junior Day in the City of Danbury, and we wish in peace, joy, and good health in many years the future holds. Signed this third day of June, 2008, at the City Hall, with my signature and the seal of the City of Danbury." Fred, enjoy your day. I also have for Fred... I don't usually give a lot of these out. I've given out one last week, and that was probably the first one in about a year and a half. But we tried to figure to do something a little bit extra for Fred, to thank him for his heroism and for his hard work. So Fred, we have a key to the City of Danbury here for you. We haven't even changed the locks. But you're good to go, and this city is your city for your heroic effort. God bless you and keep up the good work. Tremendous job. How we doing with the tape machine? We're good to go. Wonderful. Okay. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I'd ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda, and you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the City of Danbury to address the council. With that, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Probably in back, sir, in the blue shirt? Yep? Yeah, I'm sorry. Please come down here and name an address for the record.
I'm Frank Anders, 9 Terra Glen, and I am a taxpayer. I just would like, with respect to your consideration tonight for the bonds, the five bonds, $500,000 each, I'd just like to throw out that, as a taxpayer, what I'd rather have you do is come to me, come to the citizens, and ask us for a special taxation of $2.5 million. I did some quick numbers tonight, and at 5.25% for a bond, we have an opportunity to pay, at the end of four years, approximately $3,250,000 for $2.5 million worth of services. So I don't know if this is possible, but if there's a way of coming to the citizens and saying, "Tax us now, $2.5 million", I think we'd all rather pay $2.5 million today than $3 million, or if it's five years, $3,150,000 at the end for the same amount of services. That's all I have.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate your participation, too, in the process. Appreciate it. Mrs. Waller? And then Citizens for Justice in the back. Sorry, I stole your t-shirt.
Hi, my name is Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue in Danbury. Thank you, Fred. You wanna move into my neighborhood? Okay. I'm speaking on number 21. I'd like to know how long are we bonding the vehicles for? Is it five years, or is it gonna be 20? Okay, it's five. Number 22, I'm concerned about the school technology, the switches and the land, et cetera. How long is that bond? Will the technology be outdated before we can finish paying for it? Will the need for speed outpace what the bond is going to cost us all? And number 26 for SAVE. First of all, I was curious about the number of volunteers. How will you decide who to choose? I understand that there's some concern about it being less than minimum wage, but I am grateful for anything you can do for the seniors. If you find a healthy friend who is willing to work for you if you are unable or disabled... Can that happen? I don't know. I just thought I'd throw it out.
Never thought of that one, but...
You know, I mean, if somebody's willing to and they don't own property, is there a chance that they could put in the 100 hours for another resident who is not able to do it? Anyway, I just thought I'd ask that. But anything you can do for seniors will be a tremendous help, especially the way the assessments keep going up. Thank you very much.
No, I got somebody up here.
Hi, my name is Eileen Sapola, 36 Farview Avenue. This is my granddaughter, Angelina Martins. And we're here tonight in support of, I'm not sure the line item, the agenda item tonight, but it's for the Hispanic Center. And I just wanted to let you all know that myself and my entire family, my parents, my three children, all married, have children, live here in Danbury, were all in support of the Hispanic Center. We're upset that you're considering not funding them again this year. It was suspended last year. We are asking you to please restore their funding for this year. They're a wonderful organization. They do so much good for many citizens in Danbury. I know a lot of people who have benefited from their program. So we just ask you, please, to consider re-establishing their funding. Thank you very much.
I'm Jim Twitchell, 62 Briar Ridge Road. I'm the president of the Ridge Bay Hills Association, and I'm here on behalf of the community in support of line item number nine, and just here to answer any questions if the council has.
Oh, we...
It's for the Speed Hump donation?
Yeah, we don't engage in question and answer, but if in the deliberations there's a question, Mr. Twitchell, we know to call on you.
Very good, thank you.
Ma'am? Your hand was up.
Thank you. My name is Mary Collins at Two Frontier Lane. I'm also here to advocate for the funds for the Hispanic Center. I'm really was... I'm also here to express my dismay that the funding was cut since it was frozen and that it was denied. I did read in the May 22 minutes of the ad hoc meeting, and some of those words shocked me. From my reading of it, one of the council members threatened to stop the funding due to their First Amendment rights to speak out, and they did not use any taxpayer money to advocate for the constituency that they have. And that really disturbed me. It's also my understanding that the funds from the '06-'07 budget were frozen and not used, so that's an important fact for any advocacy work. And this group is so important to our community. If we're concerned about our citizens learning English and becoming citizens, they're working towards voter, getting people to vote, the essential classes, English as a second language, so they can follow the laws of our city. So I feel that it was also distressing that I did not know about this meeting. I found that it was a kind of... It wasn't well-publicized. And I thought that there were people at this meeting who were the... I thought it was supposed to just be members of the council and the people from the Hispanic Center. And I wanted to know who the other people were, who were advocating, and what did they say? So, thank you.
Elise Marciano, 179 Longridge Road, Danbury. Good evening, members. And I'm very happy to be in Mr. Visconti's district. I wanna talk...
Somebody is ready, huh? That's right.
I just might do that. I'd like to talk about number one item, the Richter Park Authority, and also number 31. On the Richter Park, I think this council has a duty and should really put this council to work getting the Richter House back to where it should be. It's been way too long that people have been waiting for money to fix the roof and to make the building safe to have their musicals and to have their art shows. This is an important part of the Danbury community, and I think it's very important that we have funding for it to be fixed and restored so that it can be used. On the Hispanic Center, I'd like to just point out that I think the Hispanic Center is a great success. They have been in business for over 30 years. If anybody here has their own business, they know that it's a very difficult thing to stay in business over a period of years. They have shown by their ability to stay in business and to get the funding that they needed. And I think it's time for the City of Danbury to cut them loose and say, "Hey, you guys can do it on your own." I just saw where the Portuguese Society has a big fundraiser. And I think the Hispanic Center has plenty of people who would not only run a fundraiser, but do it very well. And I think that they should be allowed to do this without public money and funding. I think to vote to give them money would be a situation of soft bigotry because of low expectations. And I think that it's time that this council said to them, "You're on your own. You can do it. Good luck." Thank you.
Montempi?
I'm Elizabeth Montempi, 175 Cohanza Street. And I'd like to comment on the first item in the agenda. The application to the state for a $20,000 grant for the purpose of an inspection of Richter House to determine the feasibility of whether it should be restored, renovated, and so forth. Now, we have heard recently, many times, about the neglect of the Richter Park Authority for that house. And it was their responsibility to provide for the maintenance of Richter House out of their own funds, from their own budget. And this they did not always do. But Richter House was left not... Mrs. Richter didn't leave it to the authority. She left it to the City of Danbury. And it's up to the City of Danbury to oversee the maintenance of that house and the preservation of that gift. Now, we have a $20,000 grant request in front of us. I would like to know exactly where the money is... Who the money is going to, and exactly if that is a necessary first step in the renovation of this house before you apply for it. Thank you. And whatever needs to be done to move this project forward, I hope you would consider doing it quickly. Thank you.
Mr. Jannelli?
My name is Richard Jannelli. I live at 18 Benson Drive in Danbury. I'm also a member of the Board of Education. I would just like to ask the council to please consider favorably items 21 through 25. I think it's important that these expenditures be approved so the infrastructure of the city could be maintained. Thank you very much.
Jannelli? Mrs. Abrantes, and then all the way in the back.
Alina Abrantes, 12 Fanton Road. One of the reasons that I'm here tonight is because of the items on 21 through 25, which is the bond issue. I do have a major concern. You have the police cars listed on there, and that's always been a part of the operating budget of the City of Danbury. It shouldn't be something that's being put through a bond issue. And if I remember correctly, when I was on the Common Council, we did request information from the Bond Council with regards to how we could put this forward to the public. And it had to be put forward to the public. It had to go to a referendum. And we have a very intelligent public in the City of Danbury. When they approve something and they like what's happening, they will come out and they will vote for it, and they will support it. And we should be giving the citizens of Danbury the right to make a decision as to whether they want this to pass or they don't want it to pass. Also, with regards to the Hispanic Center, some of the comments that were made here today. The Hispanic Center helps people that are legal, a lot of people that are legal. And the one thing that we need to do is assimilate people into our community. I was very fortunate. I came to this country from a foreign country, and I am very assimilated to this country. I participate and I help in lots of activities and do everything I can to help the City of Danbury. And we have to educate these people, teach them the laws. And that's what the Hispanic Center does. And they should be funded, and they should be given that money so that they continue to educate people within our community. They help people from Puerto Rico. They help people from all Latin American countries and the islands surrounding South America. So that's very important. And yes, they do contribute to the Portuguese Cultural Center. I'm very proud to be Portuguese, and we do a lot for our community, and we're proud people.
Hello, my name is Elke Probst. I live at 11 Belmont Circle. And I'm here to talk about line item 31. I'm a council, and I've been a council in the community for the last 11 years. Since April 1st, I have referred 17 clients to the Hispanic Center. I've broken them down by ethnicity, and I refer them to different programs at the Hispanic Center. And some of those programs were citizenship classes, ESL classes, and four out of the 17 individuals, I refer to the health coordinator. 12 of the 17 were families that have come from Puerto Rico that went to utilize the ESL classes. And I just wanted to let you know that if you take away funding from the Hispanic Center, it will limit services that help support, advocate, and empower individuals in need. And if this happens, that creates for more social problems and social issues. And I know we want better for our community. We want an educated community. We want a community, and we want individuals to feel supported and empowered. So I just hope that you reconsider and think about how important the funding is for the Hispanic Center. Thank you.
Right? No? Elke... Elke, who's your last name? We didn't get it out yet. Sorry.
Good evening. Jesus is the Lord. How you doing? Listen, I'd just like to speak about item 31, the Hispanic Center. Last year, there was allegations that the Hispanic Center was criminally violating immigration laws by aiding and abetting illegal aliens. And that's one of the reasons, or at least part of the reasons, the funds were cut last year. And I'd like to see the funds stopped. I heard that the $27,000 that they're talking about giving to them is for a 16-hour-a-week job for someone who works for this nonprofit organization. If you figure that out, that's at a rate of over $60,000 a year. And in this economy, it's outrageous. We have people, middle-aged family members, trying to take care of their family, working in Home Depot after they've lost their jobs, working for $12 an hour. And as far as I'm concerned, it's an outrageous expenditure of taxpayer money to give money to an organization like this that has certainly had these allegations of helping illegal aliens. And that is a criminal violation of law. Thank you.
First of the public? Ms. Basso?
I'm not that... I don't know how to put them down. Oh, that'll work? Wait a minute, what's my best side? Wait a minute. Okay, listen, I wanna talk... I wanna talk on item 31, okay? It was money for the Hispanic Center. I was at the meeting, and I heard that the budget was $409,000 is what they have to spend right now. Where is all this money going? Could it be for salaries? I don't know. I have no idea. I would love to see their agenda. Now, if you do go in for English as a second language, they charge you $60 to teach them. It's not free. Why is it not free? When they can get the same thing at the literary volunteers on Danbury, Danbury High School does it, the Public Library does it, the Senior Center does it. They all teach English as a second language. So where does all this money go? And I have a lot of Hispanic friends who do teach a lot of their friends who come in from other countries. They teach them English as a second language, and they do it for free because they were taught to speak English as a second language also. And they like to help each other. When it was opened, it was all volunteers. Now, they have a little over $400,000 budget, so it's gotta be... Most of it's gotta be for salaries. And I have one last question. It's not on the agenda, it's on the reports. What I wanted to know is, and I miss it very much, the Rose Hill Avenue Bridge, when will it be finished? The Empire State Building was built in 1931, and it took them only 16 months to finish it, and that was all 103 floors. Thank you, guys.
Antonio, you get that? Have the boys keep an eye out for Pauline up that way. All right.
I'm here every day, Mr. Mayor.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council? Pat? Go ahead. Pat? I know. No, take your time.
Hello, my name is Pat Cadet at 19 Lakeview Drive, and I'm here to talk about what almost everybody else is talking about, the Hispanic Center. It doesn't serve as the entire community. It just services a certain ethnic group. Just the name of it shies people away from it. Other ethnic organizations in Danbury do not ask for taxpayers' money. With the economy the way it is, and everybody, I'm sure, believes that it's gonna get worse, it's really a matter of keeping our tax money for emergencies. This is not a time to be doing something like this. Everybody in this room, most of all you people, are gonna have to pay higher real estate taxes, and some of us can barely do it. It is not the time to do this.
Thank you. Pat, Mrs. Mitchell?
I'm Margaret Mitchell. I'm a taxpayer. When I'm in Danbury, I live at Two Park Place. I came for numerous reasons, but I'll stick... I came for numerous reasons, but I'll stick to one that people haven't touched on much. Items 21 through 25, the five projects for $500,000 or less. These are only five of the 193 projects that are listed in the capital plan as needed to be done. And these are all the small projects. Those are the only ones I dealt with, 500,000 and less, 193 of them. So after we do this, we will still have 188 projects left to go. So obviously, it is in our best interest to do some projects in a timely manner. My problem is that as a taxpayer and not a resident, the only thing I get to vote on is the bond issues. I cannot vote when you're elected. I can speak at public meetings, but my outlet is the bonding. So I would like you to bundle these small bonds. If you did all 193 of them, it would come to $27 million. You aren't going to do that in a bad economy, absolutely not. But from my point of view, you could bundle a few more things in there and go out for a vote up or down by the taxpayers. Someone previously said it. We have very smart taxpayers who really care about Danbury. And I really believe the only time I've ever seen a bond issue fail was a very controversial sewer plant where everybody had had it up to here on the issue, and they voted it down, and I thought, what are we going to do? Drink sewage? It's the only time I ever saw something voted down. So I think you can trust the taxpayers. I think the system of having a vote up and a vote down is good, and I would like you to bundle these bonds and perhaps put a few more in them and bundle it and send it to the voters for up or down. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that imagery about the sewage, too. I appreciate it. I'll be thinking about that tonight. Thank you. It's very good. We got time for one more. Mr. Gucker, you get the last word.
Ken Gucker, 89 Peytoner Road. I apologize for my retire. My boss wasn't, being self-employed, wouldn't let me out early to come tonight, so it's the best I could do on a short notice. I have one concern about the bond issues. I feel like we're mortgaging our future away. We keep adding more and more bonds, and I think when this all comes around, in the end, we actually have to pay for this. We're going to find ourselves farther in the hole than where we started. You know, there were very good suggestions as far as paying now rather than paying later. And as we all know with the credit crunch that's going on, credit cards, et cetera, you know, when you finally look at what it actually costs you in the end, it far more exceeds than what your original idea. I mean, it looks very appetizing to say, well, we can put it off for a while, but we always come back to the end with a lot more than we wanted. The second thing is the Spanish Center. This has been a very heated issue back and forth with immigration and everything going into town, but I think there's something that's sorely missing from the argument. The Spanish Center acts almost as if a educational service to those who don't have the ability to see what is available out there in the city. I think that anything that helps educate the public, regardless of who they are or regardless of what their ethnicity is, is a benefit to the city. As we know, the more educated a populist or public that we have, the more informed, the more positive nature local government becomes. We reach out to residents and we ask them to get involved. We ask them to come forward and show us what's going on in their area. Because it's, as you know, being on the council, you can't watch everything that goes on all over the city. I mean, you would spend all day having to quit your job and run from one of the towns to the other. When you have an environment that is very open and very positive, that invites everybody inclusive, to where there is no fear of retribution or attack, and they feel educated to where they can speak intelligently to their local officials, you have a much more informed public. Hence, you have a much more informed council and local government. It's very important. We have money that we spend for all kinds of other educational things in this city. For $21,000, yes, that's a lot to me, but in the grand scheme of things, to have an educated public that can come forward and express what they need to express and let us know what's going on, I think it is a very worthwhile investment. I think it's an investment in Danbury's future, and I think we should look at it a second time. Thank you, and I apologize for my look. And by the way, great job, Fred.
That concludes the public speaking portion of the meeting tonight. I appreciate all the residents that came out to articulate their position, and your participation in our government is welcome. With that, we have not officially called the roll because Dot with the tape recorder. So anyways, we're going to move on and just have the clerk call the roll.
McMahon.
Present.
Negerchef.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Trombetta.
Caladrino.
Perkins.
Biscani.
Shanice.
Esposito.
Sadi.
Present.
Cabo.
Vitello.
Diggs.
Ty Schultz.
Arcanti.
Curran.
Knapp.
Levy.
Riley.
Seaberry.
Stanley.
There being 21 present and zero absent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple announcements we have this evening. On June the 28th, it is Ben and Barbara Shanice's wedding anniversary. Ben, congratulations to you and Barbara. I just want to point out a couple items that are on the events calendar notice that we distribute to the council each and every month. The We Race Danbury Adult Graduation Ceremony at Western Connecticut State University is a very interesting event for those council people that have not attended that before. It's a lot of positive energy and a lot of people that have frankly gotten a second chance at getting their diploma and graduating. So if you have an opportunity, I'll be there, and we'd love to have some participation from the council in that event. It's a lot of fun. That's June the 5th, by the way. And June the 6th, I got you. We have the Danbury Westerners Breakfast. That's at the Ethan Allen Inn from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. The speaker this year is Joe Pepitone, New York Yankee, will be there. It's always a good event and well-attended. Also in the evening on the same day at 6:00 p.m. is the Horde Foundation Scholarship Program. This is where the programs, the scholarships are awarded. It's a fantastic time to see our young people achieve success and be frankly rewarded for their hard work throughout the year. That weekend also, coming up this weekend also, is the Greek Festival. That's on Clapham Road. That's always a fun experience as well. And there are several other items on the back of the catalog that you'll see there. Most notably, the Alternative Center for Graduation. The Day Graduation is in the morning at 9:30. Mr. Riley can attest that that's always a very emotional day, and certainly to see some participation from the council in that as well. June 15th is the Elks Annual Flag Day Service. That's at 1:00 p.m. That lasts about an hour. The Elks do a fantastic job at recognizing our flag, and again, I'll be there if any council people want to join me at that particular event. In addition to that, June 29th marks the opening of the Ives Concert Park and the Ives Concert season. This year, we have, our opening act is Melissa Etheridge. The show starts at, gates open at 6:00, show starts at 8:00 p.m. We could always use volunteers as well for those council people that would look to donate some of their time. I know you're pretty pressed, but if you could do that, that would be terrific. The rest of the items are on the calendar as in front of you, and you certainly can always call Wendy in my office if you have any other questions or want to find out the best time to attend to that. Thank you, Mr. President. With that, that concludes the announcements portion of the agenda this evening. We'll now move to the consent calendar. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, June.
Excuse me. Mr. President, minutes, please. Sorry, Mr. Majority Leader. One second.
What did you say, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the meeting as all members have had copies and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
It was made and seconded by Mr. Negerchef to adopt the minutes as presented. Are there any deletions, changes, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and adopts the minutes. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Now, Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar. Sorry.
Let's just take a moment here just to reflect on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, June 3rd, 2008, number 10. Receive the communication and approve the transfer of $20,000 into the Fire Department's Special Services Account, number 2010.5052, due to ongoing events. Number 11. Receive the communication and approve the transfer of $500 from each of the fire watch invoices, number 2670 and 2686, and transfer the $1,000 into the Fire Department Maintain Automotive Account, Number 12. Receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Phil Curran to serve as member of the Danbury Professional Firefighters Pension Board. Number 14. Receive the communication and authorize the transfer of $50,000 to the Ambulance Fund Budget Line, item 5000.5349, billing fees. Number 15. Receive the communication and approve the annual suspense list in the amount of $207,981.19, as recommended by the tax collector. Number 17. Receive the communication and confirm the appointment of Michael Sopranic to serve as constable. Number 19. Receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the City of Danbury, Department of Health, Housing, and Welfare to apply for and accept the funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health in the amount of $13,831 for the Preventative Healthcare Block Grant. Number 20. Receive the communication and take no action. Number 26. Receive the report and refer to public hearing. Number 27. Receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number 28. Receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number 30. Receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, counsel? Ms. Ty Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion later to consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All who are in favor of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 1, please.
Communication, grant, Richter Park Authority. Your common council members, the City of Danbury and the Stanley, Vasker, Richter Memorial Park Authority have identified a grant opportunity from the Connecticut Commission on Culture and Tourism to assist us in assessing the potential restoration of the Richter House. The Authority is completing their master plan process, and the reports obtained from the professionals hired through this grant will allow informed decisions. As you know, I am supporting a $50,000 appropriation for Richter's House's immediate restoration needs. We potentially have state bond funds available for restoration of the building, but the Governor's Office has indicated we must conduct a thorough historical assessment before such funds will be available. Attached, you will find a copy of the grant application, and I am writing to ask for your authorization to proceed. We anticipate a quick review of our application by the Commission at their next meeting in June. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Mark D. Bounton, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Cabo.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and authorize the City of Danbury to proceed with this planning and survey grant application.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. McMahon. Is there any discussion about this particular application? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to the Director of Finance. Just want to clarify, it's my understanding, and Mayor has provided some information on this, that the reason the city is applying for the grant is pursuant to the statute. The Authority does not have the power to do so. Is that correct? And going along with what the mayor has explained in the letter and answering, I think, a question that was put to the council on the floor was that this $20,000 will be used for consulting fees and assessment that then will allow us potentially to receive additional grant funding that we can apply for through the state. Is that correct?
It's an arduous process, councilman. This is the first step in being designated as a historical significant building. This money will be used for a historical architect who will go through it, analyze it, look at the significance, write a report, make recommendations, and that will then make us eligible for application for further grant funding for renovations. But at this point, we can't even apply for those until we have the designation. So it's a long process, but we got to start somewhere. So this is kind of the idea here. Go ahead, Mr. Sadi. Sorry.
Just one more follow. Is this something, the designation or the assessment to determine whether or not it should be designated historical, is that something that would go out to bid, and there are different organizations or entities that do that type of evaluation?
Yeah, there are different entities that do that work, but that would be run in concurrence with the grant provider and who they would recommend for that kind of work. They have a number of different staff that they recommend to do the analysis and assessment. These monies will be given to the authority that's not, they're simply using us as a conduit to be able to apply for the actual grant itself. And this comes after a meeting that was attended by members of the Authority, myself, the Historical Society, and different organizations that have, that are looking at the historical significance of the mansion. Any further discussion about the grant application? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 2, please.
Donations, Paracare. Your common council members, the City of Danbury has an exciting new program thanks to a strategic partnership with Paracare, an organization in Danbury whose mission is to help people with special needs to enrich their lives to the full potential of their talents. A new community garden is being constructed at the City Tree Nursery at the corner of Myrie Brook Road and Old Sugar Hollow Road, where 20 Danbury residents will have the opportunity to develop their own gardens on the site under the supervision of the Director of Recreation. Paracare has recruited a donation of $2,500 from Walmart for fencing and topsoil from Danbury Topsoil to begin construction on the garden. Paracare's individual contributors funded the cost of lumber for the garden boxes and farm equipment rentals for tilling the new garden. The City of Danbury Highway Department provided some assistance with the excavation of the garden, and the Forestry Division provided wood chips. The Department of Public Utilities is providing water service to the site for use by the community gardeners and the Forestry Division. I am writing to request the common council accept the donations and embrace the fine work of Joseph Laporta and Amy Mitchell from Paracare for bringing this exciting idea to our community. Sincerely, Mark D. Bounton, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Negerchef.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donations and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
It was made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Any discussion about the donation from Paracare? I know that Mr. Laporta and Ms. Mitchell are here tonight. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All who are in favor of the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 3, please.
Donation, Police Department. To members of the council, from Ellen Baker, Chief of Police. Permission is requested to accept a donation of $25 from Ms. Irma Badger of Middletown, Rhode Island, which she has made for use at the city pound.
Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, counsel? Counselman Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the $25 donation and send a letter of thanks.
It was made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All who are in favor of acceptance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 4, please.
Communication, donation, Fire Marshal's Office. Dear Mayor, Bounton, members of the council, the Fire Department has received the following donation. One, Connecticut Fair Plan, $454.95. This donation was made for the Fire Marshal's Office to purchase a Canon Speedlight camera. I would ask that this generous donation be accepted at the June meeting of the common council and funds be deposited into Fire Department line item 2010.5052. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Respectfully submitted, Jeffrey Harold, Fire Chief.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we receive the communication, accept the donation appropriate as indicated in the communication, and send a letter of thanks?
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All's in favor, please.
Second. There you go.
Mr. Trumbett has seconded the motion.
I'm not.
Please let the record reflect that.
Yeah, you did. I was looking at Charlie.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Trumbett.
Never happen again.
I know, so I might as well take it while I can.
Fine job, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you very much.
Any discussion about the donation?
Second, Mr. Trumbett.
Any discussion about the donation to the camera? Saying none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication, donation, Fire Department. Dear Mayor Bounton and members of the common council, I would request the approval of the common council to accept the donation of $50 from a Ms. Jean Stotter. To attach note, our crew went out to help change her tire at headquarters parking lot. Could you please deposit this amount to our Maintain Automotive Equipment Account, number 2010.5506? If additional information is needed, please contact me. Respectfully yours, Jeffrey, or Harold, Fire Chief.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Curran.
Make a motion, we accept the donation and put it in, deposit it in the Maintain Automotive Equipment Account, number 20105506, and send appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Shanice. Sorry, Mr. Arcanti, just a little bit. Any discussion about the donation? Saying none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor of the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor Bounton and members of the common council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for performances by the cellmates, which is the Senior Center Band and the Senior Center Chorus from the following: The Homestead, '75, The Glen Hill, '25, The Gardens, '25, Ridgefield Clawsing, '25, Danbury Healthcare, '25, Almost Home, '50, River Glen, '50, New Fairfield, Senior Center, '25, Cantorwood Valley, '25. Please accept these donations and transfer the above $325 into line item 5002.5601, Office Supplies. Thank you. Respectfully, Susan M. Tomanio, Director of Elderly Services.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calvo.
Your Honor, at this time I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and accept the donations, transferring them into line item 50025601, and send letters of thanks to all of the generous donators.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Shanice. Any discussion about the donation? Saying none, then I'll try your minds on accepting a donation. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seven.
Communication, donation to the Danbury Library. Dear Mayor Bounton, the Danbury Library has received a donation from Morgan Stanley Arbyside Financial Center Plaza from New Jersey City, New Jersey, in memory of Miklos Mahaski in the amount of $100. Please place this item on the agenda for the June common council meeting, as this donation needs to be deposited into the library fund, .4651 donation. Sincerely, Mark P. Heskell, Library Director.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Caladino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, accept the donation from Morgan Stanley in memory of Miklos Mahaski. That's a $100 deposit into the library fund account, 4651, and send a letter of thank you.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Negerchef. Any discussion about the donation? Saying none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Communication, donation of transmitter wiring and antenna. Dear Mayor Bounton and common council members, please accept our company's donation of a transmitter, wiring, and an antenna located in the vicinity of Danbury Airport. If you have any questions on the matter, please don't hesitate to call me. Sincerely, David Dunley, the General Manager.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation by automated waste disposal and to send a letter of thanks.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Riley. Any discussion about the donation? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, through the chair to Ms. Estefan.
Sure. Ms. Estefan, please.
For the record, Ms. Estefan, this is the equipment that has been used in the past, and the only question I would have would be, has it had any interference with public safety frequencies at all?
No.
And you have had no problems with it?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Visconti, any other questions for Mr. Estefan? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you too, Mr. Estefan. In what year did we receive this equipment?
I'm sure.
What year did we receive the equipment?
Well, it would be now.
I mean, are we using this? Isn't this in use already?
It might be, just to, might help the council if Mr. Pincher can give a little history of what we're doing out there. Or, or Ms. Estefan, if you're ready to.
The transmitter and receiver is, and the antenna's been up there about two decades now. There wasn't at least, either in the Dyer administration or the Sauer administration to put a transmitter and receiver up there. They paid us lease fees for the use of the spot for that timeframe. They've now elected to no longer use the transmitter and receiver as they're going to next telephones, and so they're willing to donate the equipment to us. It's on a low-band frequency range, and it does have some use and some value to us.
Thought that might be helpful in answering the question. Any other questions, Mr. Rotello?
Thanks. Through the chair to the Director of the Airport. Mr. Estefan, do you foresee a cost to maintain the equipment?
The, my experience with radio equipment has been that as long as it's tuned properly and maintained, there should be very little expense associated with it. We do have a base station that we currently have up there that belongs to the city, and it was brought in, brought in through the airport to grant. And as far as I know, it's tuned maybe once or twice a year, if, if that at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Rotello, further questions or discussion? Saying none, then I'll try your minds on acceptance of the donation. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, donation, speed humps. Dear Mayor Bounton and members of the common council, REI Property and Asset Management has proposed a donation of $6,000 from the Ridgeberry Hills Association to cover the cost of installing two speed humps within their community. Our office has reviewed this request and finds it acceptable. I'm requesting that the donation be accepted at the next meeting of the common council if their project is to go forward. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Fareed Al Corri, City Engineer.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Calvo.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation of $6,000 from Ridgeberry Hills so that the speed humps may be installed in their community.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Mr. Shanice. Any discussion regarding the donation? We'll start, Mr. Rotello.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to, well, I guess maybe Antonio, or perhaps even the representative from REI, if he's allowed to speak this evening. I think it's a good idea, but when we do these surveys, we have to make sure that most of the people in the neighborhood want, actually want the speed hump. And this is, we're doing this sort of in an ad hoc fashion, so I just need to be confident, it happens to be in the sixth ward, that the people immediately affected by it, the people will be traveling back and forth. I know it's going to reduce speeding for, for people going through the neighborhood, but I have to feel confident that the people living in the neighborhood most affected by this are in, you know, in fact, in favor of it. Thank you.
Do the people in the neighborhood want the Rotello speed hump?
Yeah, the.
You put my name on it, are you?
Association representative speak, but it was a general vote at the association to request this. We verify that, and so we did. That is one of the critical steps.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Shanice, your hand was up.
Normally, when applications for speed humps are given, it goes through numerous processes. But it's always been my understanding that once the process has gone through and the speed hump has been accepted, that it's usually the city's responsibility to pay for it and install such a hump. Now, again, I'm not against the donation, but just to give a, what the procedure would be, so other communities, if they wish to have a speed hump installed, will the $6,000, if they're willing to donate the speed hump, will that increase their time of installment, or there will still be the standard order to where a speed hump will be installed?
Okay. Let me just start to tell you, there is a document that was prepared right after I got here, probably around 2007. It was to deal specifically with setting up a process on how to install speed humps. It's very important that you just don't put speed humps on any road that are being requested. There's a lot of engineering that goes through, there's a traffic count, sometimes there's an average speed that's recorded, so there's a very thorough process, technical process that occurs prior to these actually being approved. Once the technical aspect of it, and once we've verified that at least 70% of the impact of the community is actually okay with the installation of speed hump, all the information's forwarded up to the mayor's office. They will review it with our recommendation. Usually, always, the mayor's never gone against our recommendation, and at that point, it's put on a list. And depending on available funding, then it gets implemented. There is some priority that is given to these speed humps, depending on how severe the condition is out there. Ultimately, we would recommend to the mayor a priority list of which one should be done first. Ultimately, you know, the mayor reserves the right to make the decision, the ultimate decision. But, yeah, there is a document, and the reason for that is, we were getting inundated with a lot of these requests. A lot of the requests were really, you just couldn't put them where they were being requested. There were thorough roads, there were collector roads, you would end up just completely shutting down the road by the installation of these speed humps. So there is a document, if you, any of you guys would like it, I will forward it to you, and it's a pretty well-written document. Engineering Division, along with the unit who is getting all these calls, put the document together.
Mr. Shanice.
Just to follow up, so it's in my understanding that the proper procedures were followed, and that the speed hump was accepted because there's a need for safety, not because that they donated the $6,000.
That is correct. In fact, it was on a radar screen even before the donation was brought to us. It was one of the areas that we looked at in the future of installing a speed hump as funds become available. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Ayderola. Any other questions regarding the speed humps? Saying none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Items 10 through 12 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Communication, tax deferral ordinance amendment.
What's your pleasure, counsel, Ms. McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing.
Saying no objection, it is so ordered. 14 and 15 were consent. Madam Clerk, item 16.
Communication, amendments to ordinances, section 19 through 4, 19 through 34, 19 through 35, for the Police Department.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to refer item number 16 to an ad hoc committee, including Corporation Counsel, Chief of Police, and a representative of the unit. Thank you very much.
Ad hoc committee show consisted of the following. Councilman Arcanti, Councilman Knapp, Councilman Visconti. Item 17 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 18, please.
Communication, request for sewer of 67 Newtown Road and 1 Quon trees Road.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to refer this to Engineering for a report, and also the Planning Department for a report.
Saying no objection, it is so ordered. Item 19 was consent. Counsel item 20 was also on consent. I just want to clarify the legislative intent of that motion relating to Kevin Drive. It's clear that the intent of the council to take no action means that we will not proceed with the sewer project based on the vote that we got back from the residents. So I just want to make sure we're all in agreement that that's the legislative intent there, to follow our procedure on that. Thank you for your indulgence there. Madam Clerk, item 21.
Ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for replacement patrol vehicles for the Police Department and for public safety technology equipment in the 2008, 2009 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary bearings for such purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Arcanti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to adopt the ordinance and approve as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. We'll now proceed to discussion. Start on, Mr. Perkins, and we'll work our way around, don't worry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm concerned about the, the way the bonds have been brought upon the taxpayers. Through you to the Director of Finance.
Please proceed, Mr. St. Hilaire.
How you doing today, sir? Is there any way that we can restructure the lease agreement to include the vehicles that this bond may be purchasing?
Yeah, in regards to the patrol vehicles? Not without impacting the mill rate.
Just to clarify your question, Mr. Perkins, I just want to make sure Mr. St. Hilaire understood.
Well, I just.
Tell me if I think, if you think I'm wrong. I think what he's asking, is there a way to, to lease these vehicles within the bond?
Within the current.
Within the current operating budget.
Operating budget.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it was clear, Mr. St. Hilaire. So that your answer would stand.
But your answer is, this increases the mill rate already anyway. No. No, it does not. Through the chair, one more question. Chief Baker.
Chief?
I understand that from speaking with other council members, that we are in the process of getting a full count on the number of vehicles that we have on the force currently.
I have, know we have a fleet of 100 vehicles, but it's quite a collection of all kinds of different vehicles.
Vehicles for police use, patrol vehicles.
We have 40 frontline vehicles for patrol use.
What would be the sufficient number of patrol vehicles?
I think that the number we're requesting is sufficient.
How many vehicles is bonding by, this purchasing bond by? How many vehicles about?
We're asking for 12 replacement patrol cars in this year budget cycle.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Visconti.
Thank you. Hold on a second, we have a tape. Yes, through the chair, if I may, Chief Baker.
One second, Mr. Visconti. Good. Okay, Mr. Visconti.
Right now, what is about the average that a patrol car in years would, you know, we would get through?
It's really difficult to say. There's vehicles as old as 1993 in our fleet right now. We look at the use, we look at the maintenance, the cost of operating the vehicle. We do do that in January of the year that we're going to request the new cars, and there's no hard and fast rule. And a lot of times, the cars that we take out of frontline service are put in support roles or go to other city departments. There's no real hard and fast rule that a patrol car's going to last two years, or four years, or five years.
Thank you. Follow-up, if I may, the Finance Director.
Mr. St. Hilaire.[1744.12]
Could, could you, Mr. St. Hilaire, just for the record, we're asking, looking at a $500,000 bond, okay? For how many years?
Five years.
Five-year bond.
It's a five-year bond, yes.
Okay. If we were to pass this bond and buy the needed police vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
What would be left over for that, in this amount of money? Is there going to be anything left over that we were going to do something with, or?
Well, there's, this $500,000 isn't just for police vehicles, or patrol vehicles. There's about $400,000 related to patrol vehicles and technology equipment related to the police, and there's about $100,000 for the fire department. So there's a number of items, patrol vehicles and technology items related to this stuff.
Okay, so for the record.
For public safety, public safety technology.
For the record again, then, if I may, we are buying a police car or some type of fire equipment, and we are going to supply that police car with computers and so on.
Yeah, it's, it's technology-related, public safety technology-related.
And that would be part of this $500,000?
Yeah.
All of that? All right, thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Rotella, and I'll work my way down.
Thanks, Your Honor. There's two points I'd like to just bring up briefly. One is about process, and one is about content. I think the projects are important, and they need to move forward, and I'll stipulate that at the outset, but I do have some concerns about the process. I've been back and forth with Corporation Council on this a couple of times, and there's a, a well-reasoned disagreement between myself and members of the administration about whether we can, in fact, do this. The charter is ambiguous on the point about the limit of a $500,000 borrowing for capital projects. It doesn't include a temporal or time limit on that. Historically, here in Danbury, we've done it once a year. And it, to me, it strains credulity that we could borrow $500,000 five times in one night, but we couldn't borrow $505,000 in one night without going to the voters. I mean, in 1991, a highway probably cost $500,000 a mile, so in Danbury, we could have built five miles of highway as long as they were separated by a foot, but we couldn't build, you know, a highway that was a mile and a quarter long because it would cost more than $500,000. I've been hearing from constituents, and the issue is that I'm being asked to spend an additional $2.5 million of your money tonight, after I've already spent $200 million of it a couple of weeks ago. And I am confident that if this project was brought in front of you, you would approve it. I'm also confident it will probably be approved tonight. I, I need some clarification from the Charter Revision Committee that we will not find ourselves in this position again. I think they're going to raise the limit from $500,000 to whatever it's going to be, but I would like to see some language in there that stipulates, one way or the other, how many times we can actually do this without having to go to the voters. I will be voting for one of the $500,000 items tonight that will be paid for by the taxpayers, and I will also be voting for one of the $500,000 items that will be paid for by the sewer and water rate payers. But I cannot in good conscience go against what I feel is the implied, if not actual language of the charter, and vote for all five of them. And that's all I'm going to have to say about the next five items. Thank you.
Folks, I just want to gently remind you to try to keep your comments directed towards the items on the agenda. I'll give you some latitude, but let's try to keep things relatively tight. Mr. Levy, your hand was up, and then, Mr. Seaberry, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me start with some kind of basic questions about actually all, all of the items, if I can afford me a little latitude on that, because, through the chair, to the Finance Director, if you could answer a couple of questions on this. In the budget book, on page 301, it says, and I quote, "This year, the capital budget includes $2.5 million in financing through bond anticipation notes," and it goes on to say that the notes are paid for down each year in the general fund. Are they the notes that we're dealing with tonight, the same notes that were mentioned in the budget book?
The notes that you're talking about tonight were, were talked about before, and the five, typically in the back of the book, we include the $500,000 that we've seen in the past, but that, that note talks about the $2.5 million that we're talking about tonight.
And are the same notes that we're talking about tonight?
Yeah, there is, that did need to be adjusted on that, and I don't know what page. Let me get my, if I may, get my budget book.
Page 301 is where that statement is. Well, the, I just wanted to know whether that statement in the budget book on 301, the $2.5 million in anticipation notes, are the same items that we're speaking about tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, yes, that $2.5 million, yes.
And it mentions also, it goes on to talk about, they are incorporated in the general fund of the budget? And I was just wondering, and that's the, the '08-'09 budget, where would I find the paydown? What line item and what amount would be the paydown on that?
They will be at a future budget. That's if it's approved.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, in other words, the, the budget we approved, did that have the funding in it, or?
No, because if, if these are not approved, then they're not funded. These projects aren't funded.
So, so I think what Mr. Levy's asking is that the, the projections of spending, the debt service, if you will, is making assumption of the borrowing, and is that included in the budget?
Yeah.
Because the first payment, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if, the first payment, if we were to go out for bonding on this, the first payment would not be due until next year. So you would see that into next year's budget, not this year's budget.
I was just reading literally what it said in that narrative. It said that the, it would be included in, in the general fund. So I was interpreting as the acquisition was going to be made in the '08-'09 budget, if these notes were approved, and therefore, that money would have to be, occur in this budget.
Yeah, but I, I guess I would have to clarify the, the language in there, so it's not confusing to you.
Because if it's in the '09-'10 budget, then.
It would be in future, future budgets.
Future debt service, is that right?
And Mr. Levy, I'm not trying to disrupt you, just, the reason for that is that the ability to execute some projects, and the time you go to market, there's a lag there, as you're, I know you're well aware, so, but go ahead, finish your thought.
Again, through the chair, then, to the Finance Director, that actually, what is the total length between when we actually receive the, the, the items which are listed in the bond, the anticipation notes, we actually receive them when we actually start paying for them?
About a year.
About a year, so it's, it really carries out to six years in the total length?
No, no, five years. We, if you notice that three out of five of these are five-year terms on these things, and then the other two are 20-year terms.
Yeah, I, apparently it was a clerical error in looking at that, where it has the layout, it talks about a 10-year lease period, or 10-year payout.
Yeah, that, that was a mistake, on the adopted bu, or the proposed budget, right?
On the adopted.
There are 20-year notes in there too, for, there were a couple, yeah, we, as we've gone through this, we, we have made some modifications, and I appreciate your point. And that'll be cleaned up in the final budget book, that'll be cleaned up, depending on what happens.
Okay, thank you very much. If I can, through the chair, to the Corporation Council.
Mr. Pinter.
In that we approved this in the, in the budget, what exactly are we approving tonight? Are we approving the authorization to, go, our approval of the sale of the notes, or are we approving the funding? Or both?
Both. You're approving the funding. The mayor indicated in his budget presentation to the council committees, as well as to the council, that he proposes these programs, he presented that to the council. He indicated in his budget that he was going to suggest these things, and then bring forward the method of financing to you, and that's what you're having, is before you tonight. You were aware of it before, because you've seen the proposed bonds, but what you're being asked for tonight is to approve this method of financing, adopt the ordinances, and therefore get the method of financing that you need for these projects.
Thank you very much. I, I was confused about this, because the, the budget meeting, when I went to talk about this, as well as the public talking about this issue, we were informed that it's not in the budget, and therefore wouldn't be appropriate to debate those, that amount, that money. And actually, I, when I look back on it, because it's contained in the budget book, I feel that it was appropriate, and I, the public that tried to speak on it, perhaps we should yield a little more latitude, and rather than stifling some of the debate that goes on, this is the legislative forum, and this is the place we're supposed to vet these things out. I understand that the, that we could probably upgrade our lease, which currently in the, in the operating budget, there's also an acquisition of, of patrol cars, and that I would rather see this personally on the, rather than in the debt service, but in the operating budget, because when the life of these, these cars expires, we're going to have the same problem that we, in that, as far as acquiring replacement vehicles, these, these vehicles run 24/7 and should be purchased every year in the operating budget, and it's, to bond it, I think we're going to be paying for some of this equipment long after it's hit the, the junk pile, so.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Director of Finance, please.
Through the chair, Mr. St. Hilaire.
Mr. St. Hilaire, hypothetically, if my wife and I wanted to go out and buy a new car, and we, and we had the money to buy a car outright in today's market, if we compared that to taking out a car loan, and keeping the money in the bank, and making the payments, and all that sort of stuff, it'd be a tough decision to make. Please explain to me, on a grander scale, purchasing these police cars and the whole thing, why is it a good idea financially to bond this, and not just buy them outright from coffers that we might be able to have it on a city level?
Well, in your operating budget, you tend to, from an accounting standpoint, you tend to expense things over the life of an asset. So, in accounting terms, these are capital assets, because they last longer than one year, all right? So you would expense them over the life of these assets, which are going to be longer than one year. So what we're trying to do is match the funding of these assets to the life of these assets. That's what we're trying to do. Now, using your example, whether you determine to buy it outright, or take a loan on that, really, to use an economic term for my days as teaching, okay, is opportunity costs, all right? What's your opportunity cost of paying outright for it versus doing a loan? Now, and this goes for all the, the bonds that we're going to be doing. Just because you give us authorization for it, doesn't mean we're going to run out and borrow right away. We're going to look at a lot of different things. We're going to look at the cost of borrowing versus what are we getting on our cash right now? So it's not, you know, a blanket, let's run, run out and issue bonds. For one thing, the term "bond" is, is easily misunderstood. That tends to imply a very long-term thing. Well, three out of five of these are only five years, because that's the life of these projects, all right? Whether we're talking technology, maxing go out, it's probably about five years. That's why the school is five years. These cars, as, as Chief mentioned, they recycle through, they're going to be patrol cars for three years, and then they get reassigned to either within the police department or within other city departments. But chances are, they're going to last about five years. It could be less, it could be longer, we don't know. But that's about what the industry standard is, okay? So we're trying to match the expensing and the funding together. Can I answer your question? Without getting too accounting and, okay.
Again, Mr. Arcanti.
Through the chair, Director of Finance, please. Sir, in simple terms.
Cut out the accounting.
Well, accounting is anything simple, I'm not sure. Is it cheaper for us to bar, to bond this money than it is for us to take the money out of the bank and pay for these things?
Right now, we're getting a little bit more on our interest than we are for borrowing.
It's cheaper for us to bond this, these items?
Right, right now.
Than it is to pay for them?
Yes.
Pretty basic, then.
Yeah, because as, as I mentioned before, and I'll, I'll keep it very simple, we just went out for $10 million a couple of months ago, and it was under 2%. It cost us under 2%. Our return is much better than that.
So if we determine these things that we must have, these five items, it's cheaper for us to bond it?
To, to band it, or short-term, yeah, if you want to stick to the bond, yes. We'll, we'll keep it simple.
Thank you, I like it simple. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Further discussion, we're going to go back around this way, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. One question, and I have a statement, but through the chair, to the Director of Finance. Two words struck me in your response to Councilman Arcanti when he asked whether it was better, or we get a bigger return by bonding slash borrowing rather than paying outright. You said "right now," and what do you mean by that? Can this, can those circumstances change?
Markets always change.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And we, we keep an eye on it.
I understand. And not, it's not meant to be facetious, but just to, there's, there's always variables as we go through.
Absolutely.
Thank you. If I may continue, Your Honor.
Absolutely, Mr. Sadi.
Oh, you can, well, he can tell you to sit down, like.
We work with our bond council to help make that determination, by the way.
Thank you. If I may follow up, I have a statement. I know that tonight, or after tonight, some people will be criticized for some of the votes here, those against and those for some of these projects. I think we can hear some unanimity that these are all worthy projects, or at least most of us agree that they're all worthy projects, but as one member of the public pointed out, there are many worthy projects that are on the list that are awaiting funding. We simply can't fund everything, and we just understand that. You can't fund everything in your own home, you can't fund everything through municipal budget, and those are the things that the administration, and the council, and Director of Finance obviously have to grapple with. While there's been somewhat of an extended debate regarding the legality of this measure, for me, it's not a debate about the legality, and I agree with Councilman Rotella that there are ambiguities. For me, it's just simply an issue of what is the best public policy to follow, as these projects are, in my mind, all worthy. But debt must be paid off, and while we do all borrow municipalities, and we borrow in our homes to pay for things, for motor vehicles, and for other items, and for additions, it is a, a well-thought-out decision, and for me, I'm not comfortable voting for all $2.5 million. And I would ask, just for some leeway, and I'm not going to repeat these comments with each item, so these would apply to all the items.
We check that.
Thank you, so we can get out of here. Yeah, I understand. I, I can't vote for all 2.5 million of these without the public having a direct vote in that process. I've heard from many constituents, and many of them feel the same way, not all of them. I would vote a positive recommendation to send these all, if they were bundled together or separately to the voters, because they think they are worthy, and I think they probably would pass. However, that's not before us tonight. It's up to us to pick which ones we believe are most important. And for me, my decision will be on those that make the most sense, are the most urgent, follow and conform to past practices as much as possible. So I will vote for some, maybe a few of these, but certainly not for all, and I'll reserve any specific comments about each item as we go through them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Mr. Chaney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple, to the Finance Director, just a couple of points, if I may just ask. Just for, for the purpose of people on the, on the council, or anybody here in the audience, can you just explain what is an anticipation note? So, because the way I understand the process here would be, there'll be an anticipation note first, at some point, where you have enough bond to go out to, to the market with it. So can you explain an anticipation, an anticipation note, and what the actual interest rate on an anticipation note would be?
Bond anticipation note is a note that's Bond anticipation note is a note that's issued, and I don't mean to sound funny, but in anticipation of issuing a long-term. It's a short-term note anticipating issuing a long-term instrument, like a bond. And generally, they're one-year, they can be in shorter lengths of time, and you renew them every year. Or you roll them into a longer-term instrument like a bond. Now, if you choose to renew them, then you make a partial payment on those things. And as, if, for example, these five-year, these five-year ones that we're talking about, if we don't roll those into a bond, then we'll have to start making payments on those things. And then, at the end of five years, they'll be paid off. Even if we choose to roll it into a bond, the front part of that bond will be for those items. So, in, built within that bond or within that bond, we'll be paying off those particular notes. Okay? Did I lose you all?
Any other question? What's the interest rate?
Interest rate? What interest rate would you be going out at? Prime rate?
That's, I mean, when we went out for the $10 million, we got under 2% for that. So, the next time we'll be going out is in August. And last August, we got under, under 3%. So, I don't know what it's going to do this August. Who knows? But I'm told that, you know, the short-term rates and the long-term rates, you know, are... The short-term rates are a little bit better, you know, it's a little more predictable in the long term, so...
Just a follow-up. So, when you see going out, for the 2%, is on anticipation note, not the bond?
Right. Oh, no, no, no. They're not going to give us 2% for 20 years. We'd roll everything right now to do that.
And when do you anticipate going out to market for the bonds? Would these 2.5 million be going out? When would you anticipate them going out?
Me, for borrowing? If we were to do it, it would be with everything else in August.
Thank you. And my other question would be to Chief Baker.
Chief.
I did ask you a few days ago for the number of patrol cars, and you responded that we have 40 of, 40 patrol cars. Eight of those are, you know, one from '99, one from 2000, and one from 2003. So, those are the eight vehicles, and you have 12 from 2005. I guess those are the ones you'd be kind of like replacing, I'm sure. But what got my attention in here was your comment on a comprehensive fleet report. Can you explain what that is, what the purpose of that would be?
Sure. The Mayor announced at our cabinet meeting back in April that he was doing some management audits for all city departments, and one of the things they're going to look at is use of vehicles. In anticipation of that study, I have a staff lieutenant preparing a comprehensive snapshot of all the vehicles within the Danbury Police Department. You know, the average mileage, the average life, the usage, the assignments, those types of things, in anticipation of that management audit.
So, when that comprehensive report is complete, one of the things they're going to be addressing is whether that, these patrol cars are still usable or whether or not they need to be replaced or not. I take it that'll be in that report?
No, that's done completely separate from that report.
Be part of this report. So, this report won't come back and say, on top of the 12 patrol cars that you are going to be replacing, it may say that there'd be a need to replace an additional 40 cars within the next year. Would this report indicate that?
No, I think, like I said, we have a fleet of over 100 vehicles, all kinds of different eyeballs, different things, and it's more of a management tool to get a handle on what we have in the fleet and what's the best use of those vehicles.
And the focus of the audit will be on personnel taking vehicles home, using vehicles, people that have vehicles assigned to them. How much do they really need it? How much do they use it? That's really where that part of the management audit is coming from.
It's more of a management thing than an analysis of the fleet.
Again, what I'm trying to get at is, from the 12 cars we're doing this year, will you be coming back next year saying, "I need another 14, 15 cars," so we would have to go through this whole process again?
If two people that, you know, watch the fleet full-time, in January, when we put the budget together for the next budget cycle, that's when they look at the fleet and make their recommendations to our budget team as to what we should come to you, the council, and ask for in terms of vehicles for the following year.
I mean, just so I can interject, one year, we did not roll over new vehicles, and the next year was a disaster, because we barely got to July 1, while these old vehicles were falling apart. And the other issue we had was, it takes us about six months to execute a sale of a vehicle. We have to go through the state bid list, we try to bundle our buying with everybody else in the state. So, there's a lag time there between the approval and the time we actually get those vehicles out on the road. These vehicles will probably not be on the road till early spring, but it takes that long a time for us to outfit them and get them ordered and so forth. Remember, in the operating side of the budget, there are command staff vehicles that we're also rolling over. Normally, we would rotate back and forth, command staff and bond or borrowing, or we flip-flop back and forth throughout the years about how to do this.
You'll see other, within other city departments, there's old police vehicles that are still in daily use.
Further discussion down this line? Okay. Mr. Levy, for the second last time?
Second last time on this particular one. I just, you know, I really got, I'm kind of a simple person, and I, all these interest rates being thrown around kind of boggle my mind a little bit. But, you know, in the private sector, I borrow money and buy things because I know I'm going to get a return on that. In government, no matter how you dress that pig up, it's still a pig and you're still paying interest on it. So, whenever I can pay cash, rather than anticipate what the interest rates are, it's a better deal for the taxpayer. My estimation.
Mr. Levy, any other discussion? Seeing done then, I'll try your minds on the ordinance appropriating $500,000 for public safety equipment, technology, and vehicles. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nays, please raise a hand. That'd be Mr. Perkins, Mr. Sheenisi, Mr. Sadi, Mr. Rotello, and Mr. Levy in the negative. So, that would be 16, 5. Mr. Rotella and Mr. Levy. Sheenisi? Perkins? Mr. Rotella. And Mr. Sadi? And Mr. Sadi? Six. Six, right? Five. 16, 5. Yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, item 22, please.
Ordinance, an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for school technology projects in the 2008, 2009 capital budget, and authorizing the issuance of $500,000 bonds of the city to meet said appropriation impending, the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion and receive the communication and adopt the ordinance.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Riley. Discussion relating to the appropriations of technology. If we could just keep our, try to keep our comments focused to the technology side. A lot of people got their general opinions out. We appreciate them, and we want you to participate, but we do want to keep the meeting moving too. So, we'll start on the end with a tape, and then we'll, I think it's Mrs. Stanley, then Mr. Seaberry, is that, and then we'll work our way around. I'll get you. I should work my way out, it's easier, but let's mix it up. Okay, Da? Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. My first question would be through you, to the Director of Finance, I believe. What are the items that we would purchase for the technology project?
Mrs. Stanley, could I call for Mr. Lago from the School District?
Sure.
He might be a little bit easier for him.
That was a tongue twister.
Mike's son. I just want to know for the record that Dr. Pescarella is here as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, all right. As well as Chairwoman of the Board of Ed, Sue Potowski, as well. Mr. Mayor? Board of Ed members.
Mr. Ray, we see a question, please?
Yes, I just would like to know what would the upgrades be for the technology end of it?
It would update approximately 430 to 450 systems at Danbury High School. They're along the lines of what are known as thin client with monitors and also self-standing units. In addition to the 430 to 450 systems, there are replacement units for backbone servers to the district, again, specific to the high school.
So, a follow-up would be computers and servers?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question?
Go ahead, Mrs. Stanley.
Through you, to the Director of Finance, I believe.
Okay.
Once the...
Yeah, they're both... Mr. St. Lair? David?
David St. Lair. My question would be, once we bonded out, who, do we give the money to the Board of Education and then they spend it, or do we do the purchasing ourselves? Who does the purchasing of these items?
The school would do the purchasing for that.
We'd have the checkbook, Councilwoman, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, we would.
Okay, and then it would just be for computers and servers and that's it? All of the money would go towards new computers and servers?
Yep.
And one more question would be to, I guess, Elio. Would the computers last long enough, the technology?
Thank you. I've worked with David on the bond package proposal to structure it, not to exceed the five-year limitation. The useful life, we believe to be approximately seven years, and there's historical data on the Board of Education's side. The units that we're looking to replace are very aged, they're 10 years plus. From an accounting perspective, we'd like to keep it as close as possible to five years. The true useful life that we believe we can get out of the systems is approximately seven years.
I think my computer's still there.
It is.
How old are the computers that we're using now that we're replacing?
The replacing, once again, many of them range anywhere between 8-plus, 10-plus years, the ones that we're looking to replace via the bond issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Seaberry, then Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up on Councilman Stanley's comment to the Director of Finance of the Board of Ed, please. You're all right, Dave, sit down.
Mr. Lago?
You already confused me once or twice. When we were going through the budget process for the entire city, I believe that one of the other councilmen, I think it was Councilman Sadi, made a comment, in essence, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, I'm sure you will, that essentially said in a roundabout way that once the council provides money to the Board of Education, and in past years perhaps said, "Well, we'd like to have X amount of dollars go towards this one particular area, books or supplies," or something like that, but once the money is in the Board of Ed's hands, then we have no say and they can do everything that they want with that. Is that a correct statement? I thought it was, Tom, and you're very astute. Is that a correct statement, sir?
That once the dollar's in our hands?
You do whatever you want with it?
Well, within the limits, within the limits of our board-approved budget.
Okay, and in no way, a follow-up, sir?
Sure.
In no way would any of this money that we could vote on tonight would go towards the Honeywell that the Board would have down the road?
No, it would not. We've already addressed it within our budget, our final budget appropriation to address Honeywell.
Okay, then...
It's specific to and will be earmarked for technology.
Okay. Then one follow-up statement, Elio, you're free. You, we'll sit down.
Okay, thank you.
I'm putting the hat on right now of a high school science teacher, and I'm reminiscing of some of the agony that my colleagues at the high school, is something like this? That some of the agony that the teachers at the high school are experiencing all year. And I'm asking my colleagues on the council to approve this because, as Elio stated, some of these computers are 10 years old, many of them have not been turned on in months because they don't work. There is, there is the possibility that with the new servers, I'm sorry, the new switches that we have coming to the high school with the computers that we have right now, we're not even going to be able to do something as simple as taking attendance, because those computers that we have and the switches are not compatible. If we expect our students to rise above academically, then we've got to give them the supplies and the materials to work with to gain these goals. And I will be supporting this wholeheartedly, and I would highly encourage my colleagues to do the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too, when I, when I had the opportunity to be at the high school, I left there in 1996. I went to the Alternative Center as the principal. And consequently, when, when I was at the high school, we had the Dells, and right now they're probably from 1996, 1997. And even, even then, we were having problems, but I know that at this time, they are just antiquated and it puts our, it puts all of us in a bad light, in that we cannot expect that our students will be able to excel nationally and internationally if they have equipment that is antiquated, which it truly is. And in another sense, I would also, would hate to see that our new, our new principal of the high school, Karen Resendez, who was a teacher at the Alternative Center too, and who is now the new principal, I would hate to see her saddled with equipment that is just about, it doesn't work, period. And if I might, Your Honor, through the chair to Dr. Sal.
Dr. Pescarella, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As I understand it, we're talking somewhere around 340 units. And I know that the Alternative Center, they use computers too, because I brought technology into ACE, and I'm concerned a little bit. I haven't heard whether the, any of the updated technology would not also go to the Alternative Center, because the Alternative Center is the Paramount Alternative School in the state of Connecticut. And at this time now, the Alternative Center has a technology room where they have approximately 18 computers, whereas, along with each and every staff member having their computer in their room. So, the question be, would some of these computers, maybe 15 to 20, would they eventually go to the Alternative Center too, please?
The answer is yes. I don't know how many. Our director is here of the technology, but the high school, the Alternative High School is considered part of the high school, so they're entitled to the same resources, and they'll be, they'll be distributing them as well.
Mr. Riley, Mr. Levy.
Mr. Pescarella, if you could answer it, if you can't, through the chair, whoever can answer it. I heard Mr. colleague Seaberry say something about the compatibility of the switches, which this council just approved a lease agreement with, the switches are not compatible with the units that they're currently in use, is that correct?
What you approved was the infrastructure to allow them to be connected to, they're an end product.
Okay.
What he's speaking about, even if you had the Cadillac infrastructure, the antiques will not run them, that we have, that's why they're not being run. The end units can take the software required to run them. That's the problem.
And, I'm curious myself, has that work begun?
Pardon?
Has that work begun? Has the installation begun yet?
It, yes, it's in June.
The other question I have is because, in essence, this is really an increase of the board's budget, when we allocate another half a billion dollars. As a matter of fact, we're going to probably be allocating more than that. But how much money is contained within the school board's budget on IT equipment, new technologies? Because it does have a relatively short life expectancy. It's not like a roof that has 20 years or a major system that you're replacing. What is... What is, what is the budget number in the school board to?
The original budget that we presented, there was a $2 million expenditure in there. When we received the allocation of 5.5, we had to reduce the amount of money in there for a lease payment for the $2 million, which was $750,000. So that's out of the budget. Currently, in the budget is the lease payment that you approved, which is about $140,000 for four years. We have about $168,000, $180,000 we're paying on Apple lease. We have about $230,000 we're paying on maintenance. So the total amount with everything is about three-quarters of a million dollars totally.
Through the chair again, so between the million dollars that we've allocated, this council has allocated above and beyond, does that make your budget whole again, right back?
No, well, no, not at all. I mean, we've had to, it would have been whole had we been able to keep the $750,000 in there for the $2 million. When that was not granted to us, we had to go to a different plan. That was all cut out of the budget. In fact, if you don't approve this, and I thank you if you do in behalf of the kids, our high school is really at its wit's ends with its software, or its hardware. We have no hardware in the budget. The money we have in the budget right now for licenses and maintenance, not for equipment. This will give us equipment. The lease is infrastructure. It's not any computers or any terminals. Big difference.
And through the chair again, is there any, I know that you have a technology group that projects what the needs will be. Do you have a number tonight you can give us on what those needs and the time span you're going to need that money in?
I don't want to go into cardiac arrest.
You know, feed it to me softly, but I'll get used to it.
Those numbers, and we put forth $2 million. I mean, the department went through and they did an assessment. Some years ago, the city granted through a bond the issuance of equipment. They've all come to its life shelf end. Some of the equipment you were talking with, Elio, it was, they were bought used. So when we asked for a fair assessment, the Board wanted to get into a recursive program so we're not standing before you as we are this evening. The plan there was to put in that $750,000, and every five years, do a renewal, just like you lease a car. So they did an assessment, which came out to about $2 million. And that would have provided enough equipment, K-8 for us. Right now, we're getting, you know, $500,000 of the $2 million. So we're still short $1.5 million.
Well, certainly, you know
We don't have it, I can tell you that.
It's the Board's prerogative as to where they allocate their resources, and they have to tighten their belt, just like we do.
Oh, and I think we do, and I think, as you said, tonight, the money for the bond here is explicitly going to use for this. I don't see this Board manipulating their funds around different accounts. They're very mindful of how to spend their money, and I thank you for that. And I tell you, good stewards for the other money.
I just didn't want to, that we are responsible for not having the technology for our children in school. It's the Board's responsibility to make those decisions as to where to allocate funds.
Yes, and if you give it to us tonight, we thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sadi. I'm sorry, Mrs. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I won't repeat my comments from earlier. But, you know, like I said, these, I think all these projects are worthy, and based on the description of what this is for, you know, I feel like my negative vote here is going to be like voting against mom and apple pie.
Kicking the puppy, too.
Again, kicking puppies. But again, it's based on a decision as to what is most urgent, what makes the most sense in the context of the voters not deciding directly. And so I'll be voting against this project in the manner in which it's presented before us. Thank you.
Mr. Sadi, Mr. St. Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair, to Director of Finance, Mr. St. Hore. This is a follow-up to Councilman Seaberry's question about how the money will be spent within the Board of Ed. Is it an accurate statement that anything that is bonded, the bond council keeps a close eye to ensure that it is being spent the way it has been bonded to be spent?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address that. This is an ordinance, and we have to spend the money in this specific way. So when it says that this is for a purpose, that's all it's going to be used for. All right? So this, you know, the school can't go out and use it for the Honeywell contract. They can't go out and use it for any other purpose. It's for technology, you know, and they gave us their phased approach plan, and that's what this is for. Okay? I hope that addresses that concern about they're going to go off and use it for some other purpose.
Say hello there. Coming around this way, Mr. Shinisi.
Thank you, Your Honor. To, this is going to be to the Board of Ed, the superintendent or the Chair of the Board of Ed as well.
Dr. Pascarella.
Also the Chair, if she's still here. I'm confused. I mean, this evening, we've been throwing, during the budget process, a lot of numbers have been thrown out regarding computers, the Honeywell is, who's paying for it? The finance director talked in phase one, phase two, phase three of computers. Now, this evening, we've been told that the computers of Danbury High School is over ten years old. Makes me wonder, what's the Board of Ed doing? Are you not looking at these computers and funding them as we go along? Are you waiting to things are so outdated that we're compelled to bond $500,000 worth of computers? I mean, I don't understand. I'm just confused on what's really going on
Mr. Shinisi, with all due respect
I mean, my question
Mr. Shinisi, excuse me, with all due respect, I mean, we're here to work together, not here to berate other
Well, I understand that, Your Honor. But the question is, you asked for the $500,000 this evening about phase one, but is there, what's phase two, what's phase three? I mean, how much money are we ultimately talking about spending? I mean, I don't mind giving money, you know, to the Board that I think is really needed, but I'd like to have an overall understanding of what the computer needs are so you don't have to keep coming back like piecemeal. I think we're piecemealing the subject here.
We are piecemealing. Let me just jump in here and say that the request from the Board, as Dr. Pascarella said, was a little over $2 million. In consultation with Mr. Lago, sorry, not Dr. Lago, and Dr. Pascarella, frankly, it was told them, "We don't have an additional $2.5 million to be able to fund all your technology needs throughout the district. Come back, redefine your plan, and let's do a phased approach." The number-one priority identified by the Board has been Danbury High School because of the condition of the equipment there. The next step would be the middle schools, the final step would be the elementary schools. Frankly, we don't know if we'll be able to fund the middle schools actually, depending on, you know, what our budgetary needs and constraints are or how we do that. But this is phase one of really a three-step process, and how long it takes us to get there is how long it takes us to get there. But I just want to give you the background of how we made, the decision-making came. So, just supposed to ask you, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Did I say your name correctly?
No, you're not incorrect, Your Honor. And Mr. Shinisi, you're right, the infrastructure at Danbury High School did not fall apart overnight, but I cannot speak to what past superintendents or past Board members were doing about it if they even noticed that it was crumbling. All I can speak to is what this Board has done under my leadership and under the leadership of Dr. Pascarella, and since we found out, and the leadership of Mark Mountain. Since we found out about it, and correct me if I'm wrong, so last fall is when we started having trouble with it?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we began right away to meet and to proactively do some strategic thinking to try and fix the problems that the high school was having because they are major problems. And so I feel that our plan is well thought out. It is not our intent to come back to you time and time again. As you've already heard from Mr. Lago, the current computers that, the antiquated computers that we have are ten years old. So if we're going to just base, if we're going to assume based on history, then we're probably looking at between another eight and ten years after we buy the new computers before we'll probably have to address this situation again. I wish I could say that in ten years, we won't even have to address it. But the nature of the beast with technology is that it goes out relatively quickly, and I think that anybody that's educated understands that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shinisi. Further discussion? Mr.?
I just wanted to add one thing, Mark. When we reviewed the process, the Board, the previous Boards had a plan, and they attempted to have it funded in different ways. They attempted through grants in the early stages, working with the state. But a lot of those things have come to an end, and that's where we're at right now. So there has been a plan, but it hasn't been fully implemented. What we have now is that all of it put together on the plan that we submitted to the city, from the past and current, that they've been working on for years.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Mr. Lago, or someone who can help me with some IT-type questions. No, I just want to ask some general questions. At one of the last budget meetings, I'm an educator myself. I've been teaching in the community college system for about thirteen years, in the business department and computer science, so I know a little about this stuff. I asked before whether or not there was a comprehensive strategy for your IT system, and I really didn't get a clear answer. I was wondering if I can get one now? If you have an overall comprehensive plan that lays out your IT needs. Before you answer, I just want to say that, excuse me, it's very complex. And a lot of things that you try to do in IT, you run into different kind of compatibility issues. Software doesn't like certain hardware. Switches don't like certain types of routers and things like that. You need certain amount of gigs for certain software. So in order to fully integrate a system, you have to have a plan. And I'd like to know if you all have a real plan.
Yeah, we have an excellent plan, and we'll share it with you. Each 169 towns in the state of Connecticut, as I mentioned before, when they started getting funding, had to have a comprehensive plan. And Danbury turned in their plan, we've updated our plan, and that's what we're building off. When we've made these assessments of our needs, it's based on a comprehensive needs assessment, K through 12. And that's been done, and we can share it with the City Council, you know, at will here. That's what the numbers that we're talking about reflect.
Are you talking
And they've been done in consultation with outside consultants as well. So that plan has been developed and approved by the Board.
You're talking an IT plan?
I'm talking an IT plan here.
Through the chair, one of the last meetings, I submitted a letter to the Chair who headed up the ad hoc
Education Budget Ad Hoc.
Education Budget Ad Hoc, thank you. And I never got any type of feedback on that plan. So it makes sense now that a lot of this stuff is beginning to roll out the way it is because I'm not sure if